It's right under Mayor Rogers. We talk about, I think Chip had said that it was essential. And then I was recorded next. And that is true what I said, but it just felt like it wasn't the right gesture.
Let them to bring other products too, since they're not creating additional risk.
Yeah.
You just want to notify that you're talking about the vendors for the farmers market.
Yeah, just that, yeah, that there will be some of our vendors who will also bring things that are what are not deemed essential. But they do have products that are essential. So what I was saying was that we're going to allow them to bring their non-essential stuff with their essential stuff. And I didn't want it to sound like we're just letting anybody bring whatever they want. Because if we have a vendor that does not bring something that's essential, whether that's food items or hand sanitizers or soap, then they can't bring their products.
Right.
Until we're back to a fully operating market. But what we weren't going to do is if the non-essential stuff, if you're coming with your essential stuff, we weren't going to say, well, you can't bring the rest of your stuff. Because it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't create an additional risk by bringing those other items.
Right.
You still can't do food demos, so not to get too deep in the woods. But that's basically, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
I didn't want somebody from the Department of Ag reading our minutes and saying, wait, what are you doing?
Al, I just want to let you know, I think it was the WBA's.
I think you broke up, I lost you. What was that?
Check to the, I think it's the WBA sent a thousand dollar check to the foundation for the farmer's market.
Oh, and they sent it to village hall?
Yeah, so it's on your desk.
Okay, all right. And I'm sorry I didn't get by to sign the warrants before I left.
Okay.
But I'll be back tomorrow night and I'll sign everything.
Okay, thanks.
I think we're still waiting for Basil to connect.
Okay. Should I call him and help him again?
Well, he's muted and I, no pick, so do you want to?
Um.
There he is.
Hi, I can hear all of you, you cannot hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yep.
Okay.
We just can't see you.
There I am.
Now we can.
Okay.
There he is.
Okay, so I think everyone's here. Right?
Yep.
All right, so we will, let's get started with our work session for Tuesday, May 26. And we'll start off with Rich Galmarini, who was the Old Home Days chairperson. And we'll talk about that, the check issue.
Hey, everyone. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you very much for having me. I know this is a kind of a long time coming because of the COVID stuff. So I don't know who has a background of my involvement or our involvement. There used to be an Old Home Days committee. And that committee was run by a few people and they were the folks who kind of made the plans for Old Home Days. But the Jolly Boys were the actual people that put the whole event together. And those guys on the Old Home Days committee, Rick Brown and some others, they were, they are members of the Jolly Boys. And they did it for, I don't know how many years Basil, Basil wouldn't know, but they did it for an astronomical number of years. And they finally just said, hey, okay, we're, we're kind of done and burned out with this. And then the Jolly Boys asked me and a couple of other people to get involved. And we kind of put our group together. So a lot of the information from the Old Home Days committee that started a while, a long time ago, never really filtered over to the Jolly Boys and didn't necessarily always filter over to the new committee and what they used to do and some of the agreements or other pieces that they had put together. So after Old Home Days of 2019, we received, the Jolly Boys received a bill from the village. And it had, it had a breakdown of a number of different items. And one of the, one, one of the items was payroll. It had payroll, regular payroll, overtime, benefits. The total for that, for the, for the 2019 Old Home Days for the payroll was $3,123. And then there were other expenses. Sanitary facilities, the electric, the dam pavilion, West Pole Water, miscellaneous supplies, other expenses. That totaled $1,214.99 for a total of $4,338.15. And then the village gave a $700, which, thank you very much. So then we received a bill of $3,638. And it was something that we weren't really, all the new group really wasn't familiar with. And I had reached out to Rick Brown and said, hey, you know, have we gotten these before? What's the, what's the story? And he had said about 25 years ago, an agreement was made between that group of the Old Home Days committee and the village. And these were the items that the Jolly Boys would pay for from Old Home Days on each year. And the, the number varies between each year. So I don't know, whatever, one of the days, I don't know if it was in November, December, January sometime. I met with Judy and Judy gave me a breakdown of, of certain pieces, the hours of the employees that they put in. And then what some of the items meant. And I don't know if, if you, if each of you have that bill or that invoice, or those invoices. And what we were asking for is to revisit that. It's an agreement, but nobody has the agreement. It's just, was it an agreement that took place 25 years ago, what, 1995? And so part of what we would like to look at, and we don't have a problem with paying at all for the electric, the sanitary stuff, the water for any, any, I'm looking for the one word. Any perishable items, those type of things, we don't have a problem paying for. I know the, there's a couple of things what, what I would at least like to see is, is on the water end of it, the sanitary facilities. We, we were built for 90,000 gallons of water, but we've been built for 90,000 gallons for the last six years. So I just don't know if that's, if that's red, you know, maybe we used 130,000 gallons. Maybe we only used 60,000, but so what, what I would like, what I'd like to see with, and I bring back to the Jolly Boys, one, we don't, like I said, we don't have a problem paying for the sanitary facilities, water, the electric, any other miscellaneous things that have to be, have to be bought. Of course, some of the items from this, from the 2019 Old Home Days that we were billed for that were miscellaneous, were like rakes. And a couple, we had cutting pliers as well. Our general thought, well, we have to buy rakes or we have to buy other different pieces, we, we should probably own those if we bought those. But is the village going to also use those at another time period? And maybe we don't, we don't have to pay for those.
And we, we took those off.
Okay. Okay.
We took off the rakes, the cable ties and the cutting pliers. The only thing in supplies that you guys are paid for is toilet paper, paper towels, soap and garbage bags. Because the original bill included an additional $175.88 and miscellaneous. So the total was $352.35, where the current bill, it's $176.47.
Okay. Yeah, I, well, I, I don't know if you've sent out that in that bill, but.
I did. That's the one that you have that the total is, hang on. The 346242?
I don't have that one. I don't know if you.
Oh, that was sent out in December and that went to P.O. Box 531?
Okay, the treasurer would probably have that then.
Oh, okay.
He would be waiting for us to have this meeting to, to, to talk about these things.
Okay.
If there's other adjustments.
Yeah, because you and I had talked about.
Rich, we're not hearing you.
You had asked me about the supplies and we had talked about the rakes and those things. And so then I revised the bill.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So just so I'm unclear, so the bill is actually for 346242, right Judy?
Yes.
Okay, so, and we took off those miscellaneous supplies, which I agree with Rich. They shouldn't have to pay for that, that, those are probably things that we can use for other projects or other needs in the village. But, you know, the trash bags, the soap, the toilet paper, all that, that's definitely something that pertains just for that event, in that quantity. So Judy, can you just go over that 3462 where it comes in for Department of Public Works time? And the benefits portion in that, can you just explain that to us?
Yes. So. So DPW, they work at the park and prepare it for the Old Home Days coming in. And then every day they work in the morning to clean up the garbage and stuff. So this past year, and this, like he said, it does vary every year. It depends on weather and, and how, you know, whatever needs to be done. So this year, regular time, they put in 92 hours. And then overtime, there was a total of 27 hours. So the way that it's worked is they get charged regular time at their regular rates. So we do a spreadsheet and we do each person and they're charged, because you know, all the guys are not making the same amount. It depends on how long they've been there and what rate they're at. So they get charged whatever the employee is charged, you know, gets paid. And then on the overtime, they do get charged a benefit rate. I believe it's 40%? Yeah, 40% of overtime towards benefits. And that's where those numbers came from.
And Judy, those 92 hours, how many days is that officially?
Let's see.
Five, six?
15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. I think it's over a course of five days, six days.
Six days.
It started on the 15th and it went through the 20th. Yes, six days.
So that's, that's 15 hours a day plus another four and a half hours of overtime per day. So I mean, that's, that's almost three guys full time. Am I correct in assuming that, that Old Home Days does not rent the park, right?
Yes, we do.
No, they do.
So this is above and beyond the all-island rental?
Yes.
Looks like we may have lost Judy here.
Yes, all the guys work a full eight-hour day prior to the start of Old Home Days in the park, preparing for it. And then each day they all put an hour in. It's basically how that works. Ben, I don't know if you want to speak about it at all?
Thank you, that's exactly what I was about to explain. It's a full day of prep ahead of time and then every single day. And then sometimes there are issues that occur. And I don't have time seats in front of me to defend or not each hour that was spent. But that's in general what happens there. They're in there in the morning, clean and out.
So I think, you know, what I'm hearing, and you know, feel free to chime in anyone, but you know, kind of what I'm hearing is that, you know, yes, Old Home Days does play for the island park, the rental, just as though anybody else would pay rental fee. But the, what incurs, the work that is incurred by us as a village is because of the number of people who attend the event is above and beyond what a typical island rental would be. Is, would that be a fair statement, Ben?
Absolutely.
Also, they pay one rental fee. I mean, they're there six days, but it's one fee of $500.
500 total for the six days?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the, so basically the cost for us to do business in the village for those five days is costing the numbers that Judy just spoke about with our crew and the overtime necessary to get that park up and ready for the next day, essentially.
Okay, so, so wait, so, sorry, I got to back that truck up. So the all-island rental fee is not, I mean, it, for any other event, is a per-day fee. So theoretically.
Is just one day.
What's that?
Well, except for, except for Oktoberfest.
So, right, so Matt, you're.
Well, my point is, my point is, is that the island is monopolized for six days with this event.
Yes.
So if you rented it, $500 a day for six days, that's $3,000 right out of the gate, before you add on the garbage services, the alcohol permits and everything else. I mean, the truth of the matter is, is that we're, probably 25 years ago, someone asked the question of whether or not they were getting raked over the coals with the rental fee and would prefer to see it done hourly so that they could manage the costs better. But now we're sort of in the flip side where hourly rates have escalated. The, the island rental fees have not kept pace, though we keep chooching them up. But because it's not for profit, it's not going to be a huge sum of money. And so now we're, we're finding ourselves where, you know, we could be three grand to 3,500, depending on which way you do the math. So the question becomes, what's preferable? Because the $3,600, $3,400, that sum of money isn't going away. It's just, how is it being billed? Is it being billed hourly or is it being billed as a flat rate per day? Cost is the same within 500 hours. Because I mean, it's not like the work doesn't have to get done. And if we didn't do the work.
So I just want to, I just want to kind of back up a little bit. There's, on, the event starts on Tuesday. On Monday, most of all, the Jolly Boys are there. I know guys come in and out from the village. DPW, they're putting up, most of the time, they're putting up snow fence and other things that we're requesting where it, where it be set up at. I can attest to, because I didn't know about it, like, so I can't really look and say, yeah, they were there for eight hours each day. And each one of those guys showed up each time of that hour. And I'm not saying that that's, that's not what's happened. It could very well have been that way. But I guess my thought would be, we don't have an Old Home Days this year. Are those individuals still working? And they're, they're salaried employees. They're working that, they're working that job whether we have Old Home Days or we don't, correct?
They're out in the park every single day picking up trash during that time.
We have six days worth of other work for them to do that they're not doing.
And then the last day, so, because we're saying six days, the last day is the Fishing Derby. I was there last year because I was learning everything that was taking place during that time period with that Fishing Derby. I was there from probably 7:30 a.m. until 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock p.m. when the Fishing Derby ended. There wasn't a thing left on that, on that island. So, and it wasn't, there was, there was a dumpster there that, that modern disposal would come and pick up. But that's, so that, that's the, the general thought. And our, our general thought was, is two things. We made, in this event, we made $44,000, netted $44,000 for the community that we end up giving back, giving back to the community. We, our golf tournament that we had, netted $24,000 and that was a one-day event. And nobody ever wanted to take on, take the responsibility of Old Home Days. So, and there's not a lot of guys in Jolly Boys that were interested in taking on this event. And it, it, it almost died, it almost died when, shortly after I joined the Jolly Boys. And one of the things, and I've said this before to other people at, at the WBA and other things, when I joined the Jolly Boys, one of the first meetings was, should we continue to have Old Home Days? And my thought was, wow, I just joined an organization that's going to kill Old Home Days. It's not as, as, it's an incredible amount of time and effort that goes into the volunteers to put this event on. And we look at, you know, what, what's our value for it? What's the bottom line value for it? So those are just factors that we end up considering, the organization ends up considering. It's something that I find is very, very helpful, good to the community. We tried to do many different things this year to try to, to get Old Home Days going. Unfortunately, the group decided to, to cancel it. So, which is a, which is a downside and a bad thing. But it is what it is. So that's just, I guess, our, that's just my thought. I just wanted you to, to know all aspects of, of where our organization and thoughts are coming from and just to be heard on the, on the invoice. And if, and if the invoice is, is, if you feel that's the way that the, the agreement should be done, then send us the invoice and we'll pay for it.
Rich, this is Elliot. I had a question for Judy. What was, what was the bill the previous year? Did we look at that to see, I mean, has there been a large increase over the last couple of years?
Uh, hang on.
Previous bill was $2,299.
Okay.
The bill from 2017 was $2,776. The bill from 2016 was $2,979. The bill from 2013 was $3,160.
We're averaging.
18 bill, so I don't know why there was a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I was in the same boat, you know, running the taste when I inherited it. And it's, it's gone away and I hear your point. And I think what we tried to do several years ago was to try to make it so that it's, that we recognize our community events. But also, I think we've also been trying to make them more transparent. So a lot of the things may have gotten shifted around. Whereas before it was a lump sum, so nothing was hidden before. It's just we, I think in the past, that's why I was asking Judy. I don't remember how we billed it, if we didn't.
We've always, we've always billed it this way.
Okay.
Yeah, the labor the past year was more. I don't know what they can do different. I don't know if it was a wetter spring and there was more work to be done. I know that the Parks Committee always complains because of, you know, all the people on the island and it takes a beating. And if they were trying to do anything different to prevent that, I don't know, Ben?
Yeah, my recollection is that it was a very successful Old Home Days last year.
2018 or 19?
19.
Yeah, yeah, our best, our best year in a good while was 2018 because the weather was perfect. There was four perfect, whatever, 80-degree, 75-degree day.
Yeah, it was 19 was about the same, or am I off? Did you have any rain days? That would be my only thought at this point is that we were in there after every day because you never had a shutdown.
No, we, we had rain on Wednesday and didn't open up until 4 o'clock. And then we had rain Friday mid afternoon. In those two days. But if, but I think we should formalize also something exactly what we're going to.
Oh, I 100% agree.
Yeah, so we don't have, so we don't have, so we, so everybody knows.
Yeah, and since I've been here, it's always been, I guess this is what we do for Old Home Days. And somebody from the Jolly Boys calls up and says, oh, can we get this? Oh, sure, okay. It's the Jolly Boys.
Yeah.
So tell me what you need. And board members, tell me what I need to provide and that's what we'll do in 2021.
So I have a couple of thoughts about, you know, just, just everything that I'm going to share. I think, you know, first, Rich, I, you know, I think we all, we all can agree that we value Old Home Days. It's a great community event. And everyone who has found out that it's canceled this year has been very disappointed. But at the same time, as being a village board that is really, needs to answer to the residents and taxpayers that we serve, I think that this board has really looked at these handshake agreements that have happened, you know, 20, 25 years ago. And we're really trying to have a more formalized way of handling it. So no matter who comes and asks to run the island for an occasion, we are kind of being fair to everyone and giving everyone the same, the same rate, if you will. There's nothing, you know, I, I don't doubt for one second that those time charges for our staff are in any way inaccurate. I know that we are very, I'll say stringent when it comes to, you know, staffing and our, you know, Department of Public Works, you know, clocking in and out. So I, I can say that I'll stand behind those hours 100%. And I think that, you know, with this invoice, I, I think unfortunately, you know, this, this is something that we're going to ask that you guys pay because that was kind of the, the expenses that we incurred as a village for essentially the cost of doing business above and beyond our normal park upkeep on those five to six days.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. That's, I just wanted to see if there was a possibility to revise it. There were, as, and they've already been, they've been taking off, taken off a couple of the pieces and things that we purchased, that we paid for had been, and that's fine. And yes, I think we need to formalize something. And I'm fine with it all being transparent. That's all of the things that we've been doing with a lot of different stuff. That was Eichel.
I saw, he's cute.
Yeah, we've been doing it with a lot of different, a lot of different things through this process and that, and that's all fine, you know, because it, a lot of handshake agreements were, were there and that in, doesn't necessarily mean it was bad, doesn't necessarily mean it's good, but it, it's not the best for transparency. And it's not the best for you guys when you have to explain to somebody a cost or other things, or, or why did they get this and we didn't get this?
Yeah. And I think that's really the, just what you said in that last two sentences. I think that really sums it up. You know, we need to really be answerable. And, you know, we do get audited every year as well. So we just need to make sure that all of our books, the numbers are matching up and, and that we're treating everyone with equity when it comes to island rentals. So I think that we need to, and we should, you know, going forward for next year, sit down and talk about what type of agreement and formalize something going forward for Old Home Days.
Yes, that's, that's, that's fine. I can start working on throwing some language together and then we could just tweak it as, as we, as we meet.
I think, I think the, uh, the important thing would be to, um, sort of hammer out what the scope of services is that you guys are looking for. So that the DPW can look at it and say, okay, it's going to take X number of hours to put up the snow fencing and take it down and the next number of hours, this next number of hours of that. And then we can, um, we can properly budget what that effort will, will be as a, you know, an annual budget. And then if, you know, but that assumes regular hours and no overtime. And then, you know, maybe what we need to do is, you know, manage that a little bit better during the event then and say, okay, well, you know, we've got extra hours, you know, on Wednesday because of Tuesday and, you know, everything else. So, you know, we're tracking overtime hours and things like that and give you guys a heads up ahead of time that we're going over that number or whatever might be the case.
Yeah, and there's, and there's probably some pieces, definitely I should say, not probably, on our end where we can look and say, oh, instead of calling Ryan Madge, hey, Ryan, can you come over here and do this? Uh, we, we could do it ourselves. It's just, you know, that's simple. Cause a lot of times it's not anything, um, significant. It's just convenient.
Right, right. Or, or I mean, you know, you, or it could be something, you know, it could be as simple as even if it isn't a scope of work thing, but like to say, okay, we know that we're going to need two guys full time on Monday. And, you know, we need, you know, somebody that's, you know, this level and somebody's that's level. And we just assign that and it's just a fixed thing. And those are your two people and they're there all day. We're doing whatever you're asking them to do.
Yeah, and I think too, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, I think if we have to call in somebody like after hours, they have to be on for four hours. Is that correct?
They get paid for three hours.
Three, okay.
No matter how long they're in.
Right. So you're right, Rich, you know, if it's, if it's something.
Just call Ryan.
Well, not just Ryan, anybody, but I'm, what I meant was our guys when they go in.
And that's the, you know, that's the beauty of having a small community. I get it, you know. General, working crew chief is part of the Jolly Boys, so he's got the in and, and all that, but that needs to stop.
I'm just saying that, you know, there could be a fifteen minute fix that a volunteer could do as opposed to calling a guy for three hours, unfortunately. And we have to pass that along. That was kind of a point.
Yeah, and that's something that they understand on our end, definitely.
Okay.
Okay. So Rich, do you want to, um, meet with your board? Um, and, uh, you know, kind of fill them in on this discussion? And, um, and then we can, uh, get back with each other. We've got a whole year now to plan, so we can kind of try to, you know, figure out well in advance what we want to do with this.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, I'll, I'll touch base with the treasurer, make sure that he got that, that invoice. And Judy, if he didn't, I'll reach, I'll reach, I'll to you.
Okay.
Cause he might just, he probably just hasn't, is just sitting on it, waiting. And then, yeah, I'll, I'll start to throw something together, reach out to a couple of people and talk about some things and start, uh, putting things together based on what is already in the, what is already in the, uh, billing. If there's something that I don't include, you, you, you guys can, you know, include it in there. Cause as I've said to some of the people, um, newer at, at doing it over the last couple of years and I'm learning and unfortunately this year is not going to help because last year I just kind of walked around and observed a variety of different things. And now this year I can't do that. Um, I have to, I have to wait for a period of time, but, okay. Right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Take care.
Stay healthy, everyone.
Hey, you too.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye. Okay.
Just a comment, cause obviously I, I'm, I'm right in the middle of all this stuff because I'm also a Jolly Boy. But, uh, I, I, I would say if Ben and Judy and, and Rich, uh, hammer out an agreement, I'm sure the board could, could, uh, just sign off on that. Once you get it done, uh, cause Ben, you know, it needs to be done there pretty much, I'm sure. Uh, Judy does, does too. But those, those, those billings that we've been doing, uh, it, it actually predates my time on the board even. But, uh, they're, they're realistic numbers. There are expenses. And, and certainly whatever agreement that, that we reached with Rich, um, and whoever follows Rich, uh, it, it, it should reflect covering all of our expenses, no doubt about it.
Yeah. Absolutely. All right, anyone else before we move on? Comments? Ben, anything?
Yeah, it's just always been kind of a exactly what the responsibilities are for this particular event. So I'd be happy to have some formalization of, uh, the responsibilities, please.
Well, we've got a year to work on it, so I think we can get it done in that timeframe, so. And I think, you know, too, it's a positive note for the Jolly Boys too, because, you know, when Rich is gone from organizing it, the next person steps in. And they're kind of caught in the middle of, you know, kind of like, well, what's our responsibility? What is the village doing for us? So I think as a volunteer organization, it'll actually make things easier for them to have some kind of layout, um, how the event goes and what our responsibility and what we're willing to contribute as a village. So I think it's a win-win for everyone.
Yeah, it is nice. I'll, I'll say from inheriting the taste, it was the same way. It was, there were some things that were just, it was a written understanding and all I did was change the date. So it just makes it easier to have something in writing. Yep.
Okay, good. All right. Well, we'll work on that. So Judy, um, if, if they don't have that most current invoice, she'll get that over to them, the thirty-four sixty-two.
Yes.
Um, and then, you know, Rich, Rich has my email, I know, and he has yours and Basil's and, you know, and we can, um, you know, loop Ben into it as well and we can get something together.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Okay, so we'll move into correspondence. Um, I, Keaton, can you bring that picture up on the creek wall?
Yes, hold on one second.
Thank you. So I just, um, received an email this afternoon about, um, the picture that we're going to pull up. Um, the creek wall is in need of repair. And I just, I don't know, I vaguely remember from when I was liaison on the Glen Park Joint Board that, um, I thought that that creek wall wasn't our property.
It is not. That's on, that, that creek wall is on the, the Mill Street side of the creek, right?
That's correct.
Yes, all those homeowners along Mill Street own the creek.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So is this, is this, uh, in one of the residential backyards or is this the touch of brass wall?
This is twenty-six.
Um, it's.
So it's two down, three down from touch of brass.
Okay.
And note the mill stone at the base, which is kind of cool.
Yeah.
I know, I saw that. That is, that is really cool. Like, that's how that's buried there.
Yes, so the trouble is.
Matt, can you talk about that, you and Ben?
The, the property owner does.
The what? The homeowner?
The homeowner does.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure they don't know that.
All right, well, that's what I'm going to reply back when I send an email back to the homeowner. Um, I didn't think it was ours, but I wasn't sure. So that's why I sent it to Ben earlier today. And, um, I just wanted to have this discussion as a board, so we can all be educated on who owns what.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, for this type of water body, the property owners on either side own to the center of the creek. So, but that's, I'm saying that generally speaking, there are, there, there could be some weird, you know, you really, to go definitively, you really have to see what their deed says.
In, in, in this case, in this case.
Likely this is, this is the, the property owner.
Their, their property line actually comes across the creek.
Oh, okay.
Glen Park side.
They own to the other side. I see. Yeah. So it's very unlikely that the village hasn't owns this or really has any responsibility for it.
Right, we've been, we've been fighting the same fight with touch of brass for years. Because the, the same condition exists up towards Main Street there. And, you know, this is a serious financial burden for a property owner. I mean, it was a serious financial burden for the village when we did our side. It's an unfortunate reality, but they all own that wall, their portion of it.
So, so Chip, so my reply back to this resident is going to be just that, that, um, that we had a discussion about this. And I'm just letting you know that that is actually your property. You own it and you're responsible for the repair of it?
Yeah, I mean, I, al- almost certainly, again, I haven't looked at the underlying property documents, but if that's the case of their yard, if their property line actually extends all the way across the creek, I can't imagine a scenario where they wouldn't own the wall. Um, all I'm saying is I haven't actually reviewed, you know, any documents to confirm that. Case, but I have no reason to doubt that.
Um, therefore we have the right to order them to repair that. Is that correct?
Well.
Well.
Good question.
Yeah, but we may have to.
I, you know, I don't know. I guess the question is whether that's a structure on their property that we have jurisdiction over to order them to repair. Um, they have to give that a little bit of thought. That, that now, if it's falling into the creek, there's also issues about, you know, whether that would constitute a discharge of material into a stream that would require, I mean, to even fix this, they may, they may need permits from DEC and possibly the Army Corps. It depends exactly what they would need to do to shore all this up or to prevent this stuff from falling into the creek. But it, it's not really, it's, it doesn't, our only issue would be if somehow this falls under the jurisdiction of the building department for property maintenance, um, which it might, I'd have to take a look at the property maintenance code.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, I think I have enough to get back to the property owner on and, and, um, we'll see where she wants to go.
Well, just so I'm clear again, so where is it? Which property is this exactly? I just want to get my bearings.
Hey, hey, Keaton, can you let me, can you let me, um, share my screen?
Only if you promise to not draw, draw any pictures on there.
Yeah.
You got it.
All right, then you can.
I was gonna say the same thing.
So, property twenty-six, right? That's what you said?
Falls, oh, it's right. It's basically the falls.
They own the falls.
They own the falls. Wow. I hadn't, I didn't know, I did not realize that that's where those property lines extended.
Yeah.
That is interesting.
Yeah, so only this chunk of the water is someone else's property. But everything else, all the way down mill, until you get to the bend, then you start to get these weird property lines that are sort of half in, half out of the creek.
Yep.
I think it goes back, it goes back to the days when.
I, I'm sure.
Industrial properties.
Yep, and when there was a mill there and they, right, they were using the water power for industrial purposes.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that.
So.
I mean.
Go ahead, Chip, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, there's all sorts of regulatory, you know, potential regulatory restrictions on what they can do with that property. But they, based on these, uh, tax maps or the GIS, that's clearly their property. Creek is their property.
So let me ask this question. If we, um, if they were interested in repairing that, would, would my advice to them be to reach out to the depart, um, DEC just before they do?
Yeah, I mean, I, strictly speaking, I don't know that it's our job to give them advice like that, but yeah, that I would, before they do any work that involves getting into the creek.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just make an encouragement. I'll just say, I would encourage you to reach out to either, you know, probably our building department first, because I think Tim might be able to offer some insight onto it as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to need an engineer and, you know, a mason and I mean, that's how we ended up fixing our side of it, was that we ended up getting an engineered wall and then we, Al Timio sat there all summer, you know, hand, hand stacking all that stone. The good news was that we actually had, um, a little bit of land for him to sit on that wasn't water.
Right.
Whereas this, they don't have a choice.
Okay.
And that wall is continuous. It's not, it's going to be an interesting repair to just splice in that little bit.
Yeah.
And from the look of the picture, it goes back quite a ways. So that's going to be a challenge, no matter how you cut it.
Is that a residential piece of property?
Yeah.
Man. How long have those, if we have any idea how long those people have owned that? They probably have no idea.
Five years, maybe. A little bit longer than they've been there.
Oh, yeah, that's an ex, looks like that's an expensive.
Is, is this what I'm thinking it is, Deb?
She's a teacher.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That.
She will be on likely later for suspension rules.
Oh, good. Okay, great.
At least to direct.
To talk about this issue?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Yeah, she had said in her email to me and, you know, I'll just briefly sum, sum it up. She had reached out to Brian, I think at one point in the past and, um, just wasn't able to really get any concrete, if you will, concrete advice onto which way, you know, to head with this. So, um, so good. I'm happy to hear she's going to call in because we're all here and, and maybe.
Perhaps. Said it may be an issue of discussion today when she was, uh, texting with me earlier tonight.
Oh, good. Okay, great.
She, she was interested to hear what, what the conversation was. So she missed that portion from what the looks of it, but, uh, she may come on later.
Okay. All right.
Put on the screen that email. I, uh, I want to scroll down too far because it has her phone number on it, but, uh, there it is, in case everyone wants to take a quick look at it.
Ben, I have no record of an email coming from her, for, for the record.
So, okay, well, so while we're on, um, all things creek related, the other correspondence that I had from several residents on South Cayuga was, um, asking when we were going to put the gates in so they could have water on their side of the creek. So Ben, I know you.
Full staff.
I, yep, I know you and I have talked about it, but I just want the, all, the whole board to be aware of it. So when I, I don't know. When do we think we're going to be back to full staff? I don't know.
I have a Monday planned unless you tell me otherwise.
It's coming Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Judy, what, um, what are we hearing from the state, from Cuomo's office about essential and the amount of workforce and fifty percent and all that?
Um, nothing really.
Nothing's changed though, because right now.
Yeah, nothing's changed. They haven't changed anything. Um, the next big executive order that should come through is, I think, um, it's June fourth, I think is when his order expires.
June sixth.
So, June sixth?
Yeah.
So, so it's before our next meeting.
Yeah, but I don't think, um, so Ben, I don't think then we can bring back a hundred percent of the workforce yet until um, Governor Cuomo lifts that fifty percent. Am I correct?
Fifty percent on essential workers? No, it's not.
Again, it's not, it's not. It don't, the, the essential, this, this may be a fine point, but local government is not an essential industry. But the, the, the discussion about essential versus non-essential is a private sector issue. Local government is, is not covered by those executive orders that distinguish between essential and non-essential. However, local government are required, are subject to the executive orders that talk about the need to have essential workers, so essential staff identified. And you shouldn't have more than fifty percent of your entire workforce be on staff, um, until, you know, I ha, I have not, I, I, I'm not one hundred percent certain, you know, I should really probably check that there's been nothing changed with that. But yes, my understanding is in, unless, um, he does anything else or extends it, um, that that fifty percent rule is still in effect, but it's going to expire soon unless he extends it.
So, so what is our total staff quantity? Does that include us?
You're paid.
You're paid.
Yeah, I would say yes.
But you're part-time.
But we're part-time. Tell that to, tell that to my wife.
We're part-time, Lauren.
Well, so, I mean, so how many people does that, how many people does the, the operation to put the, the dam blades in take?
That's close to seven to nine. It's a, it's an everybody, it's an everybody on deck job.
Wow. Wow.
And forget social distancing, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but you're doing, so you're, so you're wearing masks, I mean, that's the point.
Yeah, yeah, you're wearing masks, but you're on top of each other and in contact and touching each other and all that.
Right, so we send home.
That I haven't had a full crew yet, and I can't do it with four guys.
Right, so we send everybody home, except the DPW crew the day that they're putting that in, and we're at 50%.
Possibly, no, next Monday is, what is the date?
First.
First, it's another.
So, we're still a week.
Well, maybe, Chip, you could look into that a little bit.
Yeah, let me, let me look into that a little bit more, make sure, you know, I mean, these executive orders come out so frequently, just to make sure nothing's changed with respect to that. I mean, he did issue an executive order on Friday.
And Erie County are full staffed now.
Well, and I'll say this, though, I was, I was erring on the side of caution with all of our staff, and, and I, and I think.
Appreciate it.
Right, and I think we had the luxury to do it and can continue to do it, because for me, that's, well, no, for, if, I mean, it may be in most respects, but look, the town is a much bigger pool than the village, and so is Erie County, obviously, no one's gonna debate that, so why? But I guess that, you know, I'm gonna defer to what Chip says about that executive order, and if there's a way that we can get back to full capacity, I'm, I'm fine doing it, I just didn't want to be doing something erronously, so.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just running up against the, the realities of only having four to five people a day.
Sure, I get it, yeah.
And it shows right now, you can tell that we're falling behind.
I get it.
All behind, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble.
Yeah, and I, and I get it, and I'm, and, you know, I'm certainly not gonna sit here and argue that point, but I just, you know, I, I was just, you know, trying to do what I thought was best and just, you know, keeping everyone as, you know, safe as we can, that's all.
Well, and then I guess the other question is, you know, how, what, how much of these, how many of these tasks fall under infrastructure?
The dam gates, storm drainage, mowing the parks, probably not.
That's actually what I was gonna ask, yeah. But on the other hand, that.
On the other hand, it's a health safety issue, because we're starting to get into mosquito season, and you'll have mosquitoes.
And, and it's an activity that can be done by a single person and remotely.
Yes, yes.
I mean, it, it seems to me like we've got a lot of, you know.
A lot of tasks I can do with guys that are on opposite sides of the village.
Right.
With the exception of putting dam gates in.
Right.
So, that's a, that's a safety feature that, that should take precedence.
No, it's safer now than it is with them in there.
No.
It's not really.
No, no, I mean, I, I think that's a safety issue, having all hands on deck, rather than not having all hands on deck.
It is, and that's, what's gonna happen is a, is a probably staggered start, you know, half hour difference in, in Crew A and Crew B showing up. So, Crew A is out the door when Crew B shows up, and they're punching their clocks, they're not using the break room, they're not congregating. That's my plan.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, if, do, do we have a full crew then on June 1st?
I don't know yet.
We don't know.
So, without the full crew, you cannot put the dam sections in?
No.
Okay.
So, I think we just need to wait, and maybe Chip can do a little bit of research and kind of clarify that for us, and then we can make a decision, if we can bring everyone in, we'll get the gates in, and if, and if we can't, we'll have to wait till we can.
Yeah, I really have to just confirm the status, it's, it's Executive Order 202.4 that mandated the, and it's a very, you know, first of all, there's, essential employees are allowed to work, but, but it's, you're not supposed to have more than 50% of your workforce classified as essential. But, so I gotta confirm the status of that, and I think there's also a little bit of wiggle room in that thing. But yeah, I'll follow up with that and get back to you.
Okay.
Tomorrow, the next day, on that.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's all I have then for correspondence, so anyone else?
Judy's email about yoga at Glen Park.
Oh, I didn't.
Oh, right.
I didn't see it, so hold on, I'll pull it up. Oh, I got it, okay.
And so, the, the owner called me because he knows me, because we, my wife and I take yoga there, and I never knew that he didn't have a understanding to use the park. I don't remember where this one fell years ago, with them doing yoga in the park. I don't think he charges for it, I think they just do it, it's almost like a gathering of people. I've never done it in the park.
I, yeah, I kind of looked for some background in it, and I couldn't find anything. The only one I found was the one at Garrison Park, so that's why I sent the email, because I didn't want to respond to him and be like, wow, you need to do this, you need to do this.
Well, I think, I mean, historically, hasn't the Glen Park Joint Board kind of outlawed, if you will, any type of, you know, public gatherings or classes or?
No, in fact, I have a memory of, I don't know whether it was the yoga guy, or it was a, oh, Ben, it was when you and I were still on the board together, the, the stroller.
Yeah.
Stroller strides, yeah.
Yeah.
That was more recent than that.
Was it?
Yeah, that was my time here, yeah, but, yeah, you on the board and me in my position here.
And by the way, though.
They didn't like that.
No, the, the Glen Park, Glen Park Joint Board does not regulate the park.
Right.
Oh, I, oh, I know that.
To them.
Them that, Chip.
They, you know, they certainly, you know, talk as though they do, so.
I, I, I know, we've been through this many, many times, and they think they do, but the, the village largely regulates the park. The Joint Board has a role to play in making, you know, advising the village with respect to that. The regulations for Glen Park are codified in the Village Code. So, but the other thing is, I don't, you know, we've certainly been approached in the past about people who wanted to do sort of these exercise things in the park, and I don't know whether, I can't remember whether we've actually ever had them officially doing that, but I, I think our position has always been requiring, you know, the participants to sign releases and whoever's leading them to provide us with certificates of insurance and those sorts of things. But Judy, I don't remember whether we've actually ever had one that's been formalized. We very well may have, I just don't, I'm not sure.
Just the one for Garrison, there's actual file for the past two years. So, that one I would say yes, but I can't find anything on Glen Park.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Something came around, it wa, I don't know if it was him or not, it was, I've only gone to his class now for the last year, but in the past, there was somebody I thought that asked, and at the time, I think it was, they weren't charging, and we can't stop people from gathering in the park, and they were just kind of doing their own thing. So, it wasn't like a business, you know, revenue or something like that.
At Garrison, I mean, at Glen Park?
I think so, I vaguely remember something.
I vaguely remember, I think it was Glen Park, somebody wanted to charge, and we told them no, and I, that was the last I heard of it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that was him or not, if he decided to just go in there and do it, I don't know.
I don't think, he's never asked before. When I talked to him, he said he'd never asked before.
That's kind of what I figured.
Yeah, and I think that's what brought the other person up, was that they wanted to charge, and they knew somebody was already doing it here and there, and we said, well, we don't know anything about it, so it was like they were just kind of just going whenever, it wasn't like a structure to it.
So, yeah, I mean, the concern from the, from the village's perspective is whether somebody's charging or not, if there's some organized activity that somebody's leading, and somebody gets hurt, you can be absolutely certain that the village is gonna get sued, and that's why we need to protect ourselves, but.
Right.
Now, because it is Glen Park, is it something that needs to be the town and the village?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they own, they're half owners of the property, so probably, that's something that, you know, their, the town attorney would have to chime in on as well.
Okay.
I mean, it is a business, so they should have a problem getting.
I'll forward that email to Linda. Great.
If that's what we decide to do. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the other thing I'll always say with these things too, is you really should talk to your insurance company about that, because they're the ones who, there's, they're the ones who.
Yeah.
Defend the village in those sorts of situations, so.
Yeah.
You should always make sure we're doing what they want you to do from a liability protection standpoint, also.
So, I, I'll send back to him that we can approve it to start this week, because there's too much that has to go into it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Okay.
I mean, you know, if you wanted to make things easier, why not have it at like South Long Park or just a village park, then you'd only have one, you know, government to deal with.
Yeah, like I.
I can suggest that.
Well, you could just suggest it, if he, if he wants to work solely with the village of Williamsville, he should pick a village park, you know, is, is just giving him an option, you know, because he, he may think that Glen Park is a village park, so he may be just turned off to begin with in having to, you know, get both of those approvals, so, just a thought.
Well, I'll put it in the email, but I'll tell him that he would still have to do the insurance, it would just be one municipality that he had to deal with instead of two.
Yeah, because, yeah, because I have a feeling it's gonna have to go before the town board over there, which means it's gonna have to go be stamped in, it'll get on the, the board, upcoming board meeting, so it's probably gonna be a month or better before they could get permission. So, whereas with us, if he wants to do any one of the village parks, you know, unless some board member disagrees, as long as they have certificate of insurance, which they're operating company, so that shouldn't be a problem for him to call his insurance agent and get a copy, so as long as our insurance agent doesn't have a problem with it, I'd say we do it, we did one other, may as well do this one too.
Me too. Okay, anyone else? Any other correspondence?
No.
Okay. All right, let's go into that franchise agreement with Charter, does everyone have a copy of it or has had a chance to look at it?
Did we visit this recently?
We talked about it like probably six months ago, I don't know, and then we, Chip was working on it, and then it got kind of pushed to the back burner and now COVID, and so now it's back in front, so.
Yeah, I mean, I remember it, but.
Is this piggyback with the town contract?
No, this is, they've reached out to us for a, a separate agreement, I don't know what this, their status is with the town. Yeah, so I sent, I sent a markup of the agreement with an email talking about the issues that the village board should consider before we send this back to Charter on March 26th, so obviously, that was right as all this stuff was happening. So, I, I don't know that we've ever, we actually have discussed it since I sent that, but, I mean, the thing about these agreements is, for the most part, the terms are dictated by federal and state law. So, there's not a whole lot of negotiating to be had, but there is some, and that's really what I was trying to flag in the email that I sent back in March and then re-forwarded on the 19th. And if you want, I could just walk through those issues.
That would be good.
So, um, you know, the, the, we, the village has not had an agreement in place with, it didn't even have an agreement in place with Time Warner, its previous agreement was with, I don't even remember what it was called back then, but before Time Warner. So, they've been operating in the village without a franchise agreement, which is okay for a long time, but obviously, they've, they've been reaching out to a number of communities to try to, you know, get up-to-date agreements, and as I said, they're mostly dictated by, by federal and state law. So, most of it's not objectionable, or to the extent it's objectionable, there's nothing we can do about it, but there, as I said, there's a couple issues, so this agreement, they're proposing to pay a 5%, a franchise fee of 5% of their gross receipts, it's the statutory maximum, so that's all good, but when I was looking at their, their draft, their definition of gross receipts is pretty narrow, it's limited to just subscriber-based receipts. The, the prior agreement, which again, I think was from the 90s, had a much broader agreement, which include non-subscriber-based receipts. But the thing to keep in mind about that is, whatever that fee might be, in other words, if we, if we propose to broaden the definition of gross receipts, it's likely to just become a pass-through, whatever increase they're paying to us in terms of their, their fee, their franchise fee, they're likely to pass through to their subscribers, so for village residents who have cable, any increase that we get through broadening the definition of gross receipts would likely mean a higher bill for the subscribers. However, I should say, I have, this is all in the abstract, I have no idea how these numbers actually shake out. We may be talking about pennies here or, or not, I have no idea how much the village has historically gotten through this franchise fee, so.
Right now, we're not receiving anything, is that correct?
No, they're paying your, I believe they're still paying.
We are, we are.
Okay.
They, they agree, they've just been doing it without, without an agreement in place, really.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, I just, you know, I just reviewed the terms of the agreement, I don't know what the business history has been and what the actual, what that franchise fee has been, and we really don't know what their percentage of subscriber-based versus non-subscriber-based revenue is, so it, it's kind of hard to judge what the value of this is without those numbers, but I, I at least wanted to flag the issue for the village board that, you know, do we want, is the village board interested in pushing for a broader definition of gross receipts, like under the last agreement, or this narrower definition, which is based solely on subscriber-based receipts?
Chip, would it help me if I sent you a copy of my cape, my cable bill? Because I do have all, all three services from the cable company.
Uh, it might, it might, but I think Judy probably really needs to maybe crunch the numbers.
I'm just looking at the revenue, from 2018, we got $88,000, 2019, we got $89,000, and this current year, we got $80,000.
Yeah, and no doubt their subscribe, their, their revenue, their subscriber-based revenue, I would assume is down, I mean, lots of people.
Yeah.
Myself included.
I would think so.
I've cut their cord, although, you know, still use them for internet, but.
That was gonna be my question, is, is this, is this cable television, cable internet, cable anything?
It's, this is, this is any subscriber-based service, so. You know, it's, it's really the issue of whether or not it should include non-subscriber-based receipts, and again, I'm not even sure with those, I mean, this maybe is something we just need to have a discussion with them about. We can point out fact that our prior agreement included non-subscriber-based receipts. We're not in a position to know what, what those are, we'd have to, but we could raise the issue with them and say, well, hey, well, we want to know what the difference would be if we included non-subscriber-based fees in here like we did under the old agreement, we can ask sort of for an accounting from them, I guess. And again, it may turn out that it's, it's not a significant amount of money and not worth haggling over, but, but we just don't know, as I said, this is purely in the abstract here, because all we're talking about is the definition of the fee, but I don't know what their actual receipts have been. But we can ask them for that information if we think it's worth, you know, we don't want to leave money on the table if we don't have to. Although, yeah.
On the other hand. On the other hand, who's putting the money on the table?
Well, right. Like you said, this is, it's kind of a no, like I, I have not negotiated with Charter on this yet. But my guess is maybe they don't much care about the definition because they're just gonna pass it through. And although, I mean, they have to be concerned about the bills being hired cuz then more people may decide to cut the cord. But, um. But yeah, ultimately, they're not gonna eat that. If, if we change the definition of gross receipts to match the earlier agreement. Presumably what they're gonna do is that's just gonna show up in your, all of your, those of you who have Charter or Spectrum on your bill. Um. As a higher bill.
Yeah, I mean.
But again, whether it's.
I guess it, it strikes me.
Two cents a month or $2 a month, I don't know.
Right. I mean, we should, we should get a better feeling for what sort of order of magnitude that is. But, um, but beyond that though, I would say that because of the whole Verizon Fios situation in the village. You know, we don't have a lot of alternative internet services. I mean, basically it's.
You don't have.
Spectrum or nothing. So, um, Spectrum or dial up at this point. But, um. It would be, it would be sort of compounding. A negative to take a situation where there's no competition and then make it more expensive just because.
Yeah. Yeah. And as I say, ultimately, I think it comes down, that comes down to a, a business or dollars and cents issue. And our problem, as we've already recognized, is we don't really know what those dollars and cents are. So if you want, you know, I can just note that in the agreement when we send it back to Charter and say, hey, we wanna, you know. We basically wanna know. If we used a definition similar to the prior agreement, you know, what would that mean, uh, dollar wise? See what they say.
Yeah. Can't hurt to ask, but.
Right. Um.
They have to be really compelling.
I'll look at, at what they send us when the payments come in and see if that is, um, separated on there too.
Yeah. And it may or may not be, I mean, under the old agreement and under this agreement, we do have the right to inspect their, their books. If we, but my guess is they don't go out of their way to break it down for you.
Right.
But they might, they might. So it would be good to see what they have. So the second issue is the length of the term. They're proposing 15 years, which is the maximum. It could be shorter if the village wanted. The, the last contract had a term of 10 years, although it was extended beyond that. And basically is just operating beyond its term. As I indicated in my email, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other on the length of term. You know, a, a longer term, it provides greater stability and lower transaction costs. You won't be negotiating this again, you know, for a longer period of time and paying your attorney to do that. But on the other hand, it locks you in, uh, for a longer period of time. And if things change on the other provider, you know, if there's things about it you don't like, you're really not gonna be able to change them for 15 years. So. You know, again, it's kind of a business decision. Uh, I, I guess, you know, you. Well, you, you guys have to tell me what, what, what you value more.
I'd be more on board with 10. I think 15 is a long time to get into an agreement.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I mean, isn't, you know, of the two parties, which one's gonna be more likely to pursue renegotiation? It's gonna be the utility because technology changes and their, you know, billing rate changes and whatnot. So, you know, does the term really matter at that rate? And then, you know, seeing as we have so many irons in the fire almost every day, all day long. And we're discovering new ones that we didn't even know we had. Do we really want to have to add another task 10 years from now? You know? If we can kick it to 15.
Yeah.
The only question I have is, does it refer at all to, um, the rolling in new technology? Like, I, like, I know there's been concern about the 5G technology necessitating. Equipment on poles every block or so. I think that's become a thing of the past already. But I'm just wondering if it says anything about technology in there.
None of, there's nothing in the agreement that's gonna override. I mean, that's all, there's all separate issues. Our, our ability to regulate our rights of way and things like that. And this agreement's not really going to override that or affect that.
Okay.
This really has more to do with. The financial terms of what, uh, of, you know, they have to pay for the privilege of, of doing business in the, in the village. But no, I didn't, there was nothing in there that really concerned me about. Their ability or their obligation to roll out new technology where they can put it. And again, to the extent there is, there's, it's stuff that's dictated by regulation that we can't really control.
Okay.
The only reason that I was suggesting to you, I agree with you, Matt, that I don't want to have to revisit things more often than we have to. As God knows, we have enough to. And also cost to the village to rework the contract. But I mean, would this preclude us, like, say, for instance, you know, with the 5G, would it exclude this type of telecommunication? If it's a new technology or is it gonna be all of their gross receipts that they sell within the village? That was my concern with a longer term is if there's some new technology that now can be skirted and then we're, we're not receiving anything on that.
No, I don't, no. I mean, they're not gonna be able to offer a new, sir, I mean, th- this agreement's gonna, this is what gives them the right essentially. To operate in the village. And again, let's not get, I mean, they're not, I mean, I know Spectrum, Charter, whatever, also now operate, you know, sells mobile phone services. But this really has to do with their, their television and internet.
Okay. I didn't know if it was broad as a term like that, but if it was a new technology of delivering that, those services, if it would be able to be skirted.
Yeah, no, I don't, I, I not, I don't think so. And I don't think there is, again, I, we're very limited in what we can negotiate under these agreements. Cuz as I said, their, their form is largely prescribed.
Okay.
The, the next issue has to do with in-kind services. Which are common, that, that is, you know, where, where the franchisee, uh, provides free cable or internet to the host municipality. This agreement is completely silent about that, so it doesn't provide anything like that. Those are very, very common in earlier agreements. I don't remember actually offhand whether it was in the village's prior agreement.
I believe it was.
Yeah. But, but the thing is, I.
I remember Linda telling me it was.
But so it's worth noting, but, but the thing is based on a change in the law, FCC's orders, a recent FCC order. The value of that is almost nonexistent now, e- even if we pushed for it because. That order allows the cable companies to deduct the fair market value of those services from its franchise fee. So if you negotiate for those free services, they're just gonna deduct it off the franchise fee. So in my opinion, that's just not something to worry about and negotiate over because it's, it's not worth anything anymore.
Okay.
Um. And that's really it. Um, those, those are sort of the, the big issues. And to say that last one's not really an issue because for that fair market value reason. So. I, I think then it comes down to the, so that's the question of the term and then the question of the gross receipts. And I will follow up, um, with the person from Charter, Mark Meyeroffer or whatever. I don't remember his name right now. I think that was it.
That was it. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I mean, I can send them the agreement, but tell him that we're still, you know, flag the gross receipts issue. And we'd like to get a better understanding of, of what the difference would be dollars and cents wise. If we had a, a broad definition of gross receipts, it was similar to our prior agreement with their predecessor. Obviously it was a different company. And see what kind of information we get that way. I'm not sure where, so, you know, Al suggested 10 years. Matt was leaning towards 15. Is there any consensus among the board on, on the term?
I'm 15. I would, I want 15. I just don't, I don't think, I don't think it's worth, quite honestly, our time to be discussing this 10 years from now over a five-year difference. When we're, when it's probably pennies on the dollar. So I'm for 15. Cuz honestly, we spent, I mean, we've talked about this, how now for what, eight months maybe since Mark reached out to me? And I brought it up and then I bounced it to you. And there's just too many more pertinent things that come to the forefront. And these things get pushed aside. And here we are like nine, 10 months later and we're still talking about it. So just get it signed still for 15 years and move on.
That's, all right. That's.
I'm fine with 15.
That's fine. Um, so yeah, I'll send him off a markup. And I think that'll really just leave the gross receipts issue as sort of being the outstanding one issue that we, we want to resolve. Unless maybe for the same reasons the mayor just said, maybe we don't care.
Yeah. Well, the only thing I do care about is I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, wanna take that and pass that on to, um, the residents. So if, if, if it sounds like, and they probably, I mean, if they're gonna pass it on to someone and it's gonna be the person who's, you know, the subscriber, I think. So I prefer to just keep it where it is then, if that's the case.
Any other thoughts on that? I mean.
No, it's, I agree. It's one of these things that when, when it's due again, it's due again. It's not critical.
No, but I mean, on the, on the gross receipts issue and whether or not it's even worth trying to nail that down as to whether or not a broader one would. Would allow the village to collect more revenue.
You know what? Chip, I'm gonna send you, tomorrow I'm gonna send you a copy of my bill. That, that may answer your questions when you look at it.
Yeah, it, it might. Okay.
All right.
So, so can we try to come to, and you know, wrapping this up at our next meeting, Chip? I know you'll reach out tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, assuming, assuming they can turn it around.
Okay.
Quickly. Um. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll send it off to him, you know, this week.
Okay, great. All right. Well, if there's no other comments, we'll, um, we can, um, we can move on off of this. Anyone else have any final thoughts?
No.
No.
Okay, um, I just, I have one video on some signage for Glen Park, but we can come back to that later. I'd rather move into Basil. Basil, do you have anything for work session?
No.
Okay, Ben, Matt, you want to, you have a couple of things?
Yeah, quick things. Um, so back first of the year, we, we, Chip and I were amending the definition of structure. Whatever happened to that? I feel like that made.
Thing is, yeah, that was another thing that I think that, that.
Got sidetracked.
Got sidetracked with the code. I mean, I, and I did pull back up. I mean, we did, I did actually prepare a. A draft, another amendment to the demolition code that, um. That was big. I mean, really, I should say draft. I basically took something, Matt, that you had prepared and put it into local law form. That talked about, um.
It was a conglomeration of like five different definitions to be like the most catchall.
Yeah, but no, but this, no, but see, and that's the thing, that's not what I, what, what we had was this issue, was this reference to the 1997 reconnaissance survey. Adding a specific, uh, reference to that and then talking about structures in there being subject to review and comment by the HPC. I don't know if we ever actually got to the point of trying to straighten up the definition. Or have one unified definition of structure.
Right. That may have been overlapping efforts. Yes.
Yes. I, I think that's right. But it is, I agree that it's a mess and it should. I, now, that there's an inconsistency and we should probably try to clarify it. And then really, it really comes down to. And this is why it does overlap with HPC issues because it, it, it's mostly, the, the question that's not clear is whether or not it applies to us. To something like a stone walls. So.
Well, yeah. Okay, so I gotta find that, that email that I sent cuz I found like five different definitions. And I thought that my new definition kind of eclipsed that. So.
Maybe, maybe I couldn't locate.
Here, here's it. I found the email. It's from February 23rd. Cuz what I was actually proposing to do is that it's actually more than just this, the demolition code. Because we have five different definitions of struc-, sorry, six different definitions of structure throughout the village code. So my suggestion was we do one all encompassing definition and replace it everywhere. And, you know, it started with built or constructed of accommodation materials, blah, 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 to form a construction that's safe and stable, principally above the ground, generally with a fixed location on the ground. Or attached to something having a fixed location on the ground and associated with the use of the property. So, you know, it goes on and on and on and on and infinitum. But from the, the purposes of what started the conversation about, does a stone wall constitute a structure? This definition would have eclipsed that. It would have encompassed it.
What was the date of that email, man?
Uh. It's February 23rd. I'll just forward it to you again.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I can't, can't find it.
Here it comes. Cuz then I also looked up, um, what like the building code of New York State considers as a structure. And it was simply just that which is built or constructed.
Yeah.
Just remarkably, uh, not specific. But, um, so, okay, so I guess the point is, is that that would be a revision that we could make sort of code wide. That's eight, not specific to the, um, demolition code. It just happens to be incorporated into that. And so maybe it's, maybe the local law revision is to scoop out all of the other references to structure from all the other chapters. And just create one that's referenced through all of them or replace them all in kind or whatever is the easiest thing to do.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So then, um, so then that brings us to the, to what you were talking about, Chip, which is the division, the revision to incorporate the reconnaissance survey. So we had all agreed the last time this came up that we were okay with that language. To, you know, make it a notice, a notice requirement for the building department to, um. You know, notify the applicant and the HPC if they're proposing the demolition of something that was identified in the reconnaissance level survey.
I have a question on that. Is this, um, the landmarks preservation local law that we're referring to?
No, this is, this is, this would be in the demolition code that, that basically makes a reference to the HPC. For certain structures that are specifically listed in the 1997 reconnaissance survey is historically significant structure.
Potentially.
Pretend, well, yeah. And I mean, then the 1997. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean they're landmark, but it does identify them and it gives them a ranking, uh, of, you know, high, medium and low. In terms of their potential significance. So, but it's, it's, it's just, it's just a referral to HPC. Before a demolition permit, um, could issue.
Right. So the, the premise, the premise being that it's proactive instead of reactive.
Right.
Right. So what part, so when I'm looking at this, um, you know, the landmarks preservation local law, there's a, a paragraph in here that talks about. You know, if, um, with respect to any application to demolish or relocate a landmark or contributing structure in a historic district. The commission may, upon a finding of necessity, hire such consultant or expert as it deems appropriate to evaluate any information submitted by the applicant. And above and charge the applicant for the cost of such services that set forth herein.
Is that in chapter? Is that in chapter 47 that you're?
Yeah, this is chapter 47.
Yeah, but that's, that's referring to an actual landmark structure. If somebody's going to propose to demolish a landmark, then there's all sorts of hoops that.
So that's just for properties that are actually landmarked.
Yep. Yeah. So, so 75 Evans becomes a historic, you know, designation residential parcel and the homeowner two years from now decides to tear it down.
Yeah.
Then, then they have to jump through a lot of hoops to justify that. Same with Dream Castle, same with the mill.
Yep.
This, this issue that we're talking about is simply a referral clause that says, in the event that anybody in the village of Williamsville decides that they're going to demolish something, if that something had been identified in 1997 as potentially historic, HPC gets notified that there is an intent to demolish that. And they have, um, the opportunity to be notified ahead of time that if they choose to pursue nomination of that, they do so before the bulldozer is on the site and someone's, you know, chaining themselves to the building.
So, so the one, the one question I have though is, so there, as we all know, there are many properties and streets and neighborhoods in the village that are quite historic than some of those that were suggested in that 1997 reconnaissance survey. So my thought is that in, to be fair to the entire village, um, does it make sense to take that law and extend it to include the entire village of Williamsville?
Well, no, actually it doesn't because that was what I had originally suggested and you balked heartily at that. And in fact, what, what that begot was.
Well, and I still do. And so I'm bringing that up.
So that was the point was that the compromise, the compromise was to say, look, it just because it's old. And I mean, because initially, the way the, the way the demo code is written right now, and it always has been, is that there is a referral for any thing over 50 years old. Which is literally everything in the village.
Right.
Right? But even HPC acknowledges that just because it's 50 years old, doesn't mean it's historic. Right? So we tried to narrow the focus and say, if this was a property that was specifically identified as 97 as something worth pursuing preservation of, then that at least gets a, a higher tick mark on the referral process because it is, this is literally a threat to the preservation of that property. As opposed to just deciding to tear down an old house from 50 years ago. You know, um, that's what, that's what begot the, the map that's on the website.
No, I understand all that. And you're absolutely right. I did balk at that idea of including the entire village. But I think, um, you know, to take things, you know, after giving them more thought and to take them a step further, I, I still, I still don't really like the fact completely that we're taking sectors of the village that were picked subjectively by a historic preservation commission and then earmarked to become part of that reconnaissance level survey. Um, so, so that's, that's going to be the issue that I, I think I'm going to continue to struggle with throughout this entire conversation. And I just want to bring it up once again, like to the forefront of the discussion.
I, I guess I'm going to need you to like rephrase that because I, that sentence didn't make a lot of sense to me.
What part of that?
Basically all of it. Um, so the, it, it's not like this, this reconnaissance level survey was, was done by preservation specialists who went through the entire village and identified those properties that they felt were distinct. Those are the properties that are identified in red.
Yeah, that was done by a contractor, right, Matt?
It was done by Barrow Associates out of Rochester.
A company out of Rochester.
You know, and currently the, the woman who, one of the women who actually did that study, um, now works for Shippo. So, um, you know, you can see by the scattering of dots that it's not the whole village. It's not whole sectors of the village. It's discrete areas. And we're not talking just about districts or the potential for districts or anything, you know? It's, it's scattershot across the whole thing. And the, the premise is that any one of those red dots, which is not currently been nominated by the HPC to be a local historic landmark for one reason or another, most of which, most of those reasons are that they're residential properties, is that any one of those red dots at some point in the future could potentially be threatened by the proposal to demolish it. That does not mean that it can't be demolished. All this does is draw specific attention to those properties that you see on that picture as getting notified, that HPC gets notified that someone has proposed the idea of demolishing that house. Now, we have no regulatory controls, planning or zoning over residential construction other than, you know, land use dimensions for, you know, for setbacks and building heights, things like that. Right? So you can literally demolish anything and build anything as long as it fits inside the dimensional constraints of your property and, you know, meets the zoning code without any oversight of any kind at all, other than filing for a demolition permit and a building permit. Now, we know that without specific guidance and without specific rules in place, our village staff is going to do the job that they have to do, which is if you file for a permit, they issue a permit. If there's no referral process at all, then what you have is unpleasantness after the permit's been issued. As I think you well know, Deb. And wouldn't it be better to maybe step in front of that truck and have our village staff, regardless of who is in the building department, mandated to refer any property that's specifically identified on that map based on Barrow's report in 1997 as potentially significant to at least give the heads up to the HPC that this is being suggested. And now's your chance to, to nominate that if you're going to, because you've been sitting on it for 25 years and, you know, it's now or never.
Okay. So you're absolutely right. So I think part of the issue that I'm having with all of this is that, you know, this was what, 25 years ago? And it seems like it's never gotten any kind of traction until this past September of this year. So that's the first question that I have. And then my second point would be that all of those properties that are, that are colored on that map need to be notified. If they haven't been notified, that this discussion is pending. Because it puts an additional, as you and I spoke with, you know, Matt, it puts an additional level of oversight. Or maybe that's, maybe there's a better word, but I'm going to say it puts an additional level of oversight for said home, our property owners or business owners who are listed there.
Only if they want to demolish their building.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's still, they may never want to demolish their building, but it's still.
That's the only time that they'd ever have to deal with this issue.
Well, you know what? Sure, you can make that argument, but you could also make the argument that as a property owner, you know, my property is my domain and I really don't want any additional levels of layers of red tape that I need to go through that my, the person living next to me who isn't red dot, it doesn't need to go through. So that's, that's my argument. I think that we, and it's all about equity. It's about treating every village resident fairly and equitably. So, and then I don't think that's a big ask.
No, it's not. So a couple of things. One, you asked us to notify all those individuals prior, previously.
Yeah.
And then, and I forget why, but the last time we talked about this, you recanted that and said, oh, you know what? Now I see that's not really that big of a deal. So we didn't notify anybody. So now we're back to notifying. The, the other thing is, is that this is not, this is not a level, this is not another level.
Right.
Because every property is over 50 years old.
Okay, I'm not saying, I, you're right. I did recant mailing the letter because of the cost of it. So I just want maybe something on our website or some type of, you know, maybe in the village newsletter, maybe both. Just kind of put out there that, you know, this is what we're doing. That's all.
Because I mean, I guess I visualize, you know, are you saying something, Chip?
Well, I was gonna say, as an amendment to the code, it's going to require a public hearing and and have to provide notice the same way we do for all of our other public hearings.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I mean, I think that the hope, the way that I see it is, the hope is that when said applicant shows up at the building department window and says, oh, I want to tear down this old rock wall in front of my house. They go, oh, wait a minute, you're on that list. Um, I've got to send this to HPC. Did you know that that's rock wall is a special wall? Right? So, I mean.
Exactly the point.
And then they go, oh, okay, I didn't know that. Wow. Okay. I guess I can work around it. So rather than get down and then they've torn it down and then HPC's pissed at them and they're pissed at the building department. I think it, hopefully, that, that's the way I visualize it.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, this is, this is meant to be a trigger for the building department to start that conversation. It's a primer. You know, is to identify that, that, you know, you know, lucky you, you happen to have one of these properties that was identified in 1997. Now, you know, um, again, it's not necessarily a prohibition. It's a referral only. And, you know, and then, and then to boot, you know, I think we talked about this too, is that like, for instance, you know, the, the home on Mill there at Eagle, the corner there that's been, you know, it's lovely new home, right? And the home that was there was actually identified in that 97 survey. It was also derelict and falling down. And an engineer's review and letter to HPC would have said, this building is not salvageable. You know, go ahead and designate it all you want, but it's going to be gone because it's going to fall down one way or the other. And that's the conversation, that's the check and balance that would come with this process.
Right. Well, we have a public hearing on it tonight, so.
We do?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
I'm sorry. I thought we did. Oh.
I think I actually like that where we're headed with this. Because to me, it looks like we're hiding this secret document that was done 25 years ago and somebody shows up and HPC could say, oh, no, you can't do that. And then we like, you pull this list out from a hidden archive and so, oh yeah, you've been on this list for over 25 years. Well, I never knew that about the house 15 years ago. No one ever told me this. So I, I think it makes it more transparent, in my opinion.
That's the idea is to, you know, because that's, that, that intensive level survey, that reconnaissance survey, which then begot intensive level surveys is, is the roadmap that HPC has been following for 25 years in nominating properties. Their focus until recently has been on the commercial properties. Well, they, guess what? They're running out of commercial properties to, to nominate. So they're moving on to residential. So when it comes to the question of this being something new in September, you know, it, that's, that's maybe coincidental and also convenient, but it is also true. That, uh, you know, they, their focus has been non-residential, as is evidenced by the blue dots clustering all through the middle of the village. So, or, or sorry, not the blue dots, but the, the black triangles. All the black triangles are what's been designated thus far. So, you know, they've been focusing on Main Street and they're running out of things on Main Street. So now they're starting to move north and south. Residences were only a matter of time. But that is not what this is. But to Al's point, because this is this underpinning document that guides their, their efforts, it's the, it's the first thing they check when something like this comes up. So it's the first thing that our building department should be checking. And, and since our building department is the vanguard for demolition permits, it just puts the onus on the building department to verify that those properties, that the property being applied for is or is not, you know, already identified. They still have a, they still have a referral. I mean, the thing is, is that even, even if they're not on the reconnaissance survey, there's still a referral to HPC because most things are over 50 years old. So it's, it's a little bit redundant.
So just circling back to the first issue, Matt, now that, and I, I see, yeah. So you sent me that email. I, so do you want me to prepare a draft local law so we can then have a public hearing in this issue of having a uniform definition of structure?
Yes.
The, the only issue I see that I want to take a look at here, although I understand that it's already incorporated, this issue is already an issue under the definition of structure in chapter 12, is your proposed definition essentially excludes a building. We just need to be careful. My only concern is to make sure that there are not situations where structure is used in the code where the intent is clearly also to encompass a building. Because then we either need to say building or structure in all those cases or, or not exclude building from the definition of structure. So, but otherwise, I totally see where you're going here and I agree. That's, it's crazy. I didn't even, there's seven different definitions of the structure in, through our code, and they are not consistent with one another. So, okay, so that issue, so that's one issue that I still have to draft that. This, this, this other issue about the 1997 reconnaissance survey and the referral issue, that has been drafted. And that's, I guess, just an issue of, I, I think the public hearing was supposed to be on March 9th, looking at the draft. But I don't think it was ever held and I'm not even sure if it was ever noticed.
Yeah, I don't think it was.
Judy may have to check that.
It may potentially have even been that, that fateful night when we ended up not like having a short meeting because of COVID. So.
Right.
So the point is, we should get it noticed and back on the agenda.
For that one, which is already drafted. Judy, I can make sure I'll resend that to you. But we'll still have to draft the, the definition of structure law that Matt, again, sent a suggested language to me back in late February. So, um, but I do not believe I ever actually drafted anything based on that. So I'll do that and then we could, we could call for that at the next meeting. If you want.
Would each of those property owners get notified in this, this public hearing?
Which one?
No.
No? Okay.
No, because again, it's, I mean, it's not really, it's not really specific. It's, it's, it's a clarification of an existing referral. Identify that that is the, that is the, the list of properties that our building department should be aware of.
Right. Well, I guess it's another way of notifying them. I mean, I know we're not required to, but, you know, should we, I guess, is one way of saying, all right, this is what we're doing. Should we not, you know, let them know, you definitely have a house. You have been notified by a public hearing that we're adding this as part of our, our demolition code. And we just want you to know, if you don't know, if you bought your house, you know, 15 years ago, you, you know, you have one of these that is of interest. You don't have to do anything today or tomorrow, but you're on our list.
How much was it going to cost for the mailings?
Of the what?
Mailings? Yeah, to mail out. Well, I mean, it was basically.
Could be a postcard.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, you know, 150 some odd properties.
A number of which have already been designated as landmarked, so.
Yeah, I would do our landmarks. I don't think you need to include them. They know they're on the list.
Yeah, we'd only do the red, the red dots, you know?
I just think it's an opportunity to let some people know that you're on the list. You have been of interest, right?
Well, are we doing it or aren't we?
I don't object to it.
I'll just speak to. I'll just speak to my personal experience in September when I purchased a home that evidently had a red dot on it, unbeknownst to me, being both the mayor and a former trustee, and I did not have that knowledge. And I can just say that it was anything but pleasant for me for the next six months. So if that's any indication of how we will be, people will be feeling when they find out that when they go to do something, I would err on the side and be conservative and I would send out those postcards. And I seem to be, I, I seem to be in a minority on this issue with the rest of the board. So I, I'm just, that's, that's how I feel. I think everyone else should chime in and then we'll just go with the majority.
Yeah. Well, are we saying we, we do want to notify them that they, they have been potentially noticed? No, they, they have been noticed officially.
Yeah, I mean, what do you, what do you, what are you telling them? You're telling them, congratulations, your property was identified 23 years ago as potentially historically significant by a village, by the historic consultant. And in the event that you wanted to demolish your building, you might have to stand before HPC and justify that demolition someday.
Yeah, relatively simple sentence, not to scare them, but just to let them know.
Yeah. We got a suggestion from the public. Could we just prepare a letter and send it with their tax bill? Have we sent the tax bills on?
Tax bills are going out this weekend and if we don't have a date for the hearing, it would be kind of pointless to send out something in that, don't you think?
Well, maybe not even do that. Maybe notify them that they were listed on it and point them to our website about the information and to look for any potential upcoming, you know, public hearings. Something simple and basic.
So it's not going to be able to. I don't. Tax bill.
It's not an easy thing. Yeah, I mean, you're talking, let's say you're talking 100 properties. We've got 2,200 tax bills. And yeah, most of them are in order by SBL number, but we've already started pulling them because some go to the banks to get paid directly with their mortgage. And then everything else is going to DXO as a service to send out our mailing. So now we get.
There should be a separate postcard.
Yeah, I just.
There should be a separate postcard.
I fear that this is making a mountain out of a molehill and all it's going to do is create fervor where there is nothing, where there's really nothing to say. We're going to get, we're going to, I mean, let's say we send out 150 of them. 20% of those people are going to come, come at us, you know, guns blazing, firing all cylinders, roaring with fire out their ears because we're doing something to them that we're not really doing anything to anyone.
Well, no, we're not, but I think that if they have to go in front of HPC, that might be a different outcome.
To demolish their house.
Well, sure, but I mean, it.
How many people, how many people want to demolish their house?
Well, I, maybe a lot, Matt, I don't know. Maybe everybody wants to build a big mansion now, get rid of their small village house and build it. I, I don't know and neither do you. And the point is, is that what Mr. Roth just said to all of us, every identified property owner needs to be notified in advance, similar to ZBA issues that may affect their properties. If your property was on that list, you would want notice, period. And, and I, you know, it's as simple as that. It, whether it, whether they're ever going to demolish their property or not, they deserve the right as said property owners to know that this has been tagged on now to their address.
Okay. It's tagged onto my address too, but I'm not a red dot.
Well, maybe, maybe.
It's tagged on a.
Maybe it's the red color. You guys should have picked a different color because red is an alarming color and it's a fear color. So maybe you guys should have picked like purple because purple's much more harmonious and maybe.
They didn't think about that 25 years ago.
No, I made this map, I made this map three, six weeks ago, Basil.
There's the colors.
Whatever, whatever, I don't care. I, I'm telling you, it's, it's much ado about nothing.
But even if people, if it is not much ado or nothing, people just know that it's nothing and say, okay, well, it's fine.
Well, right, but they're not going to know it's nothing because they're going to get this random thing in the mail and that they're, they're going to think it's something big and.
Well, I think if it's worded appropriately, we can, you know, not put it in red lettering, not use bold, you know, letters, put it, you know, in a certain way and, you know, stated very simply to not alarm people, but to just notify them, to educate them. Maybe that's the better word, educate.
Right. Yeah, they should have been notified 25 years ago. Hey, we just basically finished this reconnaissance level survey. Your house or, or an item on your property has been identified as historically significant. But we did, so in my opinion, I think.
Well, we could do that. I mean, we could do that too, turn it, you know, make it, make it a positive thing. Say, you know, we're just, we're just catching up with this stuff. And, you know, in 1997, your property, I mean, here's the thing, I wasn't here 25 years ago.
Yeah, neither was I.
Right? You know, so I could have bought a house that was significant. I mean, I got neighbors down the street here who own the Mission Stiles. I mean, they, they weren't here 25 years ago. They just moved in recently. They probably don't even know that, you know, it was identified as, as potentially significant and unique and valuable to the village. And, you know, as part of that, we're, you know, our demolition code has this, you know, extra clause associated with it, just so you know.
So I, I think it's all in the messaging. I agree. So, and Keaton always does a really good job of that. So let's see what Keaton can be creative with.
By the way, do we all know it's 8 o'clock?
Yes.
All right, so I guess we'll move into a regular meeting. And then, Matt, we, we still have to talk about rezoning South Long Street, so we'll just pick that back up after the meeting.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so.